I'd like to reconvene in the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. We'll be giving a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approve.
Love the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Aldous is in favor?
Aye.
I propose. And then we'll begin with the high school senior, I think.
Hello. So this year, we focused a lot on, I've talked a lot about Slack and SMAC and a lot of things that I've done here on the board. So we finally kind of wrapped those things up about a week ago, two weeks ago. So that's come to a close. But one thing that I'd like to highlight, what's actually an event that's happening tonight at Leonard Town High School. So there, they have a choir at Leonard Town and there's like multiple different like subsections of the choir. So there's like five different groups. And four of them will actually be performing tonight at 6:30. And the theme is, all themes Disney. So I know lots of younger kids and even adults would love to go see that. It's all student-led, student-choreographed, and they're demonstrating a lot of like their teamwork, leadership, and cooperation. And some of the things that they're going, or songs that they'll be performing from tonight is going to be from Moana, Tangled, Hercules, The Princess and the Frog, and of course, Cinderella. So I think it's going to be a magical evening, and I hope to attend.
Lovely.
So these past two weeks, I have gone to so many things, enjoyed, you know, enjoyed going in, speaking with the students. But I will, I'm just going to quickly highlight two things. I went to salute to service, and that was at Evergreen Elementary School. That was fantastic. A lot of people in our community came to the school, and what they did is they had, like say, they had the Coast Guard outside, and the students rotated through the different, the different groups. So they got to go see the boat for the Coast Guard. They had Marines there, they had Air Force Junior ROTC from Chopticon High School, they were doing drills with the kids. The Great Mills Navy ROTC was there, showing them, you know, how to march and showing about flag etiquette. So a great day, or a great morning for those students that learned about not just that there's different branches of the service, and maybe what our parents, or their parents do, but a little bit more in-depth of specifically that you can be in the service and know like different types of jobs within the service. So like I said, fun day was had by all. And then yesterday, I went to the Tech Center, which is always fun, and saw the different projects for the people that were graduating their program. From the electricians, and some of them are, you know, graduating at 11th grade and some are in 12th grade, some of the seniors. It was great to go through and see the different projects, internships, and what they've learned at the Tech Center. A lot of those students will be coming out with certification and job-ready. Some of the students are going, like the three students that I talked to that were graduating from the electrical program, were going out in the field, the workforce, right from graduation. There was, one young lady, I was extremely impressed with. She went through the health field area, and she did her internship somehow up at Inova Fairfax, I think that was it. And she got to go in. Her teacher had, you know, gotten her into see surgeries, and she was very interested in the heart surgery, so she got to see open-heart surgeries for her part of the internship, wrote things up. And she did receive a four-year national ROTC scholarship to a college in order to start pursuing going to med school, so.
Well, it's an honor, it's the honors college portion of it.
Yeah, it's the honors. So she has to take all these honors classes. Very impressive, very bright young, young lady, and she's going to go places. You know, the hospitality, the young man, John, did a great job setting everything up. I just can't say enough, I talked to all the students, and they were so excited about their projects and where they will be heading in the future. So I just, I really enjoyed my day with them. All right.
Thank you. I attended a joint private sector and school conference on cybersecurity. I was invited last week. It was quite interesting. They asked me my opinions on the ability of our kids to be able to get into cybersecurity. And of course, we're funding that now. And the problem the industry's having, of course, is getting STEM students to get into cybersecurity. It's a growing demand. Also, I attended the job fair in the Hollywood Fire Department. I was really surprised when I pulled into the parking lot about 11:00 in the morning. The parking lot was full. And went in and the, everybody was very, very active. I really went there just to kind of talk to the contractors and the folks on the base to try to get a pulse on their ability to recruit students from high school and college. And so I had great success talking with a number of people, and the consensus I was getting is that they're having difficulty in finding people of interest even to stay down here in the county. And I said, well, we're here, we're having the same problems. We have to recruit teachers sometimes from out of state. Also, I, my wife and I sponsored a gentleman from Hamburg, Germany. It was kind of a risky, we funded him to come down here and provide a support and a fundraiser for Camp, Alliance Camp Merrick. And that is a little, a summer program for kids with diabetes, visual impairment. It's a wonderful program, and it's up just north of Nanjimoy. And they're kind of hurting for money, so my wife and I funded this whole thing ourselves. And the first question I have is, why would anybody come to a dinner theater at Old Brenton Inn and pay $75 to watch an impersonator doing Marlena Dietrich? And so we went ahead and we got wonderful exposure from the Washington Post, and thanks to Jesse Aitman at Enterprise and Guy Leonard over at the Times. We got the word out, we had, we're members of the Arts Alliance. Believe it or not, we had 120 people show up, and we raised over $8,000 for one-night affair for these kids. So the message is that anybody can do this. And it was really my wife that was the spark plug, and we're really happy that we're writing a check to Camp, to Alliance Camp Merrick in the next couple of weeks.
Let's see. Monday was the School Safety Advisory Board meeting. Mainly, our focus was on the four grants that are going to be released by the sub-cabinet through the Maryland Center for School Safety that hopefully will be out within the next few weeks. The first one is a Hate Bias Crimes Grant. It's open to school systems and the police. The second one is School Traffic Safety Enforcement. That will only be law enforcement-eligible. The second two each have $10 million each in them. The first one is the Safe Schools Fund, which is the same bucket of money that we received the grant from last year, and it was based on your per pupil population by county. Kind of some not-good news for the public schools is that they are going to, of the $10 million, they're going to take $2 million off the top to provide to non-public school placements that house special education children. So any of our outplacements, those schools that provide those services, we, there will be a stipend that will be given to those schools in order for them to harden their schools as they see fit. Someone did make the recommendation that those, that that $2 million would be competitive among those schools. I think MSD has, had told us that there were 103 in the state. So all of those decisions will be made by the sub-cabinet. Then the remaining $8 million will be divided up among the remaining 24 public school districts in the state. And then the second one, or the last grant, has an additional $10 million in it, and that's the SRO Adequate Coverage Grant. So for all the schools that have, you know, Mr. Ival running around doing their school, their Safe Schools Assessment, that document and any gaps that we see will be used to determine what our grant funding is based on where we have the most need. So that was pretty much the majority of the two hours that we spent in that meeting. I will give a plug. Chopticon High School varsity girls softball team will host the SMAC championship today at 4:30 against the Plata High School. Admission is $8, and the rumor floating around is that Chopticon beat out Huntington, which is like their arch rival, because they each had one loss. They made it to the championship because they had one less run allowed during the season. So it was one run that was not allowed across home plate that got them into that championship. So good luck to those girls. Everyone's worked very hard this season, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. The board members have been very busy, and we will be busy probably until the middle of June. We were looking at our calendars, and we are packed from morning till evening. And so many things are happening. The schools are busy, students, educators, and administrators. I'll highlight the Maryland in Me program, the STEM for Students, their Maryland in Me Project. And it was about Maryland history and about their families. They talked about the Maryland flag, you know, the colors of red, yellow, and black, and how it came to those colors. And they gave some interesting tidbits. The state reptile is the Diamondback Turtle. The state sports is Josting.
Yeah, Josting.
Josting. The state.
Right here in St. Mary's County.
That's right. The state flower is the.
Black-eyed Susan.
Good, Black-eyed Susan. The state dog is.
Chesapeake Bay Retriever.
Boy, you guys are good.
We know our Maryland.
The state tree is.
White oak.
That's it, white oak. The state butterfly is the.
Monarch, isn't it?
Nope. Check, spot, butterfly.
Yeah.
Oh, and the state drink is.
Natty Bo.
That was surprising. The state fish. The state fish is the.
Rockfish.
Rockfish. The state crab is.
Blue crab.
Blue crab. The state cat is.
There's a state cat?
Yes.
It's like a calico.
It is the calico cat. And the state cake is.
Smith Island cake.
The 12-Island Smith Island cake. They made their family coat of arms. They drew a photo of themselves and what they loved doing. I want to thank the STEM teachers, the art teacher, Mrs. Belisario, Ms. Ford, Ms. Carpenter, and the students and the community members who participated in the event, and it is a wonderful event. Several superintendent was there, and Dr. Montgomery, and other administrators. But we also had the flow mentoring recognition ceremony at the Forest Center. Mrs. Bailey and I were there. We recognized 100 mentors who mentored 100 students, one-on-one, and they spent hours with these students, and we wanted to recognize them for their continual support. Then, it was the SMACCO Math Challenge. Ms. Bailey and I were there. It was Saturday morning, it was fun, it was excitement. The students had on their school t-shirts.
The Wi-Fi worked this year?
Everything. It was wonderful. And the parking lot was packed, the auditorium was packed. Then there was Special Olympics Games at Leonard Town High School. I want to thank Jill Mills for hosting each year. The Academy of Finance students presented their literacy night at Chopticon High School. They talked about everything from how to finance a car, to scams, to credit cards. They covered a host of topics. Then, I attended the cook-in for teachers at the Forest Center for all our newly hired teachers. We not only want to recruit teachers, but we also want to retain them. So we had a cook-in to talk about different topics. Then, last night, the GIS students, Global International Students, performed their Senior Gala projects, which were held at the Forest Center, and the projects were outstanding. As Mrs. Weaver attested to, excuse my voice. And I took a lot of photographs, because it was so interesting, and I posted them on Facebook, and I tweeted them out. Our students are brilliant, and the future looks good, because they have so many ideas, a lot of diseases that we have, they're gonna just be rid of them with their scientific research. They are just wonderful, and I thank all the educators, administrators, support staff, and everyone who contribute, parents who contribute to the success of our students. We work hard every day for our students, and we have a great school system of hard-working professionals, and there are many people who are choosing to work at St. Mary's County Public Schools. Why wouldn't you? What a graduation rate of 95%. Well, close. 94.5, I mean.
That bar's just a little higher than cheer, it lets us stretch out.
We're stretching. Thank you so much for your patience in listening.
It has been a busy time for my family. My daughter got married a week ago, and so I have not been able to attend a number of these events, but I did attend Mabe Legislative Meeting that was held in Annapolis last week. And number of items that are, number of bills that will affect our school system and those around the state did pass. At this point, we're waiting the governor's signature on the majority of them, and so we're just not sure how that will go forward. And one that has not yet been signed is the blueprint for Maryland's future, which is also known locally as the Kerwin Bill. So once I know what has passed, I will certainly share that with all, but that's where we are right now. So thank you very much. Sir.
Yeah. Enjoyed spending time with all of you for all of those things. That's a lot of, it is. We spent a lot of time together. The, I did go up to the SMACCO Outstanding Educator Dinner that's put on for math, science, and STEM teachers on the 25th. That's a really great night. SMACCO really, so the math competition, and they just, they're a fantastic partner, and they really, they really support and care about our kids and our teachers. Chopticon High School, the hunchback of Notre Dame, Notre Dame, what a production. I just, Christine Blewett, and the theater teacher, and Sarah Lorik, the musical director, the choral director, it just, it was a stunning, moving, beautiful performance. Spring Ridge Middle School did Beauty and the Beast, that also, that's Kristy Willhite is a teacher, but also the theater teacher. She is so dedicated to it. She's got such a cadre of parents and community members that help, and Michelle Bartsch, who worked with the vocal performance. It was incredible. It's a middle school play that looks like a high school play, with a high school play that looks like a Broadway production. The arts are certainly alive and well. I would like to just kind of say, I did not get the opportunity to go to the County Commissioner's Budget Work Session yesterday, but I did wake up very early this morning, as probably many people who went to the, and I watched it on YouTube, it's over three hours. That was a nice way to spend this morning. I do want to pull up a PowerPoint presentation, because we're, their conversations yesterday are going to compel us to do some, to do some work. So we had been kind of sailing along, believing that we, we had come to consensus, we had agreement, we were where we were, and then sometime around 4 o'clock yesterday, it seems that things have shifted. If you remember back to the big picture, we're seeking a $10 million increase, $6.7 million of local funding required to have that become a reality. We broke it out and said 8 millions for negotiated agreement, 1.3 for safety, about a million dollars for enhancements and staff and things that we know as a system, we desperately need to include for our kids. We've recognized in the conversations that we've had that we're going to have to figure out how to do the enhancement, so we cut that million dollars off. And we recognize that safety isn't going to be necessarily directly funded locally, so we're going to have to figure that out. We knew that, and we've known that, and we've been working on a budget for that, but the $7.9 million for the negotiated agreement, and let's remind ourselves where we get that number, we have an incremental cost to healthcare. Healthcare goes up every year. We believe that we have really curbed that cost, and it's only a 5% increase, but a 5% increase to our healthcare is 1.5 million dollars that we have to have for next year. Utilities continue to go up. You all own homes, we all drive cars, we all understand that. We need about $400,000 for funding for that. And the bus contractors, because diesel fuel, and they're seeking an increase to their salary for their drivers, that's, that's money that we have to have. And then we have the $5.2 million for the negotiated agreement. All that adds up to $7.9 million. Until yesterday, we believed that we were going to get 3.5 from the state. The Kerwin Commission is still a conversation. They haven't changed the fact that they've said we're getting 3.5. That's, that's the known dollar amount that we have. Up till yesterday, we believed we were getting 4.5 million dollars from the county commissioners to support their priority one, which was honoring the negotiated agreement. Yesterday, they made a decision to, I'm not exactly sure where they are for taxes, I'm not, it was a work session, so there was a lot of conversation, there was a lot of proposals. But at the end, it was put forth that the school system would not, they would not, they would not fund the negotiated agreement. That was our responsibility. And that the 4.5 million dollars would not be 4.5 million dollars, it would be 1.8 million dollars over maintenance of effort, and maintenance of effort is actually cutting funding by about $700,000. So as of yesterday afternoon, when we left that, we are now at 3.3 million dollars shy of what we assumed our budget would be. I know that I've had a couple of conversations with commissioners following, and we're going to continue to try to have that conversation. We're not sure why we're in this position. If the funding is to, is to be finalized at 1, at 1 million dollars, basically, if we're to honor the negotiated agreement and cover the costs that we have to cover, we've got to figure out how to cut 3.3 million dollars worth of budget. That's about 60 positions. We're going to have a work session, we're going to, at the end of this, announce that we're going to have a work session next week. We get our final guidance from the county commissioners as of Tuesday of next week. We're, you know, we're, this is, in, as far as I know, and certainly as long as I've been doing this, we've never had a May reversal of funding like this. This is, I, you know, so we'll have a heck of a budget work session to kind of talk through this. As of right now, with the funding that we know we have from the state, and what we believe was agreed upon yesterday, although nothing's been formally communicated to us, we're 3.3 million dollars shy. So wow, just simply wow. So it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's, that's where we are. So that, so concludes my report. Your faithful servant, Everett. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Recognitions. Ms. Long. With the pupil personnel workers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. Thank you for your patience.
Today, Ms. Kate Egert, Student Services Supervisor, and I are asking you to join us in recognizing our seven pupil personnel workers as we celebrate Pupil Personnel Worker Appreciation Week. Our PPWs work within our schools to support student registration, attendance, custody issues, and compliance audits. They work with our students, families, and staff to support families living in poverty and challenged with homelessness, mental health concerns, foster care, and crisis situations. This work would not be possible without the help of our school personnel, and equally important, our community partners. We would like to share a video to highlight these efforts.
It's a really good video.
Yeah, just give me a second, it's been moved.
And we'll tweet it out afterwards. You are a very quiet group. That's good. That's nice.
Our PPDW does a lot. One of the key things that I think she does for us is just to help bridge the gap between home and school. PPWs have the service, families that are in great need, and they have things going on in their lives sometimes that prevent children from having good attendance, there may be some other barriers, that they help them navigate services. And so when we have that need, we call a PPDW. These PPWs are just like different schools, and they know all the students, they know the parents, they're experts in the teachers, talk to guidance counselors. I think they're very committed and really wants to get children in their school successful.
If you're lost, if you're confused, if you don't know where to go, these are your resources. These are the people that can help you the most. The information that a PDW has for each school system is, is about. I mean, they're invaluable. They really are. And I don't, if most of the county knew what was going on, they would be calling PDWs 24/7.
It's definitely a person, a position that is created for our community.
And as a public school, there are many responsibilities and regulations and guidelines that we must follow. For example, student registration. A birth certificate is required for students to be registered in school. There are other pieces of documentation as well that are required by the State of Maryland. So it's not the St. Mary's County rule, it is actually something that has been established by the State of Maryland, Maryland State Department of Education. And in some cases, some of those are federal regulations as well.
And when it comes to enrollment time, when they enroll, if IP can't approve residency, then she has to go to the home. She sometimes will have to help me with custody issues. Sometimes the schools won't send records, and they will get the records for us.
Sometimes we're having difficulty connecting with the family, and the phone number doesn't work anymore, it can change. Mail sometimes will return to us. So they also will do a home visit with one of our staff members to help us make that connection with the family and convey whatever the information is that they need to know so that we can, we can better serve the child.
They help us with the audit. I'll go through and check stuff, but then they go behind us and check it. Plus, they go to the attendance secretary and explain exactly what they need for that audit, because we have to prove that the students are in attendance, because when we're audited, we have to have all this proof that the kids are in person's custody, that we have to prove residency for.
I interact with the PPWs on a regular basis, do things like access their good services in our schools, make sure that some are attending schools, seeing how they're doing, asking if there's anything we can do to support the families. There are many opportunities that we have to work together to help families overcome anything, and we're trying to work on a more preventative approach to our families. We work very closely. There have been pupil personnel workers with us in family involvement meetings, they've been with us in staffing, but because of their relationships already with the children and the parents, they have often been a cushion.
Pupil Personnel Workers are, they are an extension of the guidance office. And additionally, they're a training team. Like, our PPW work really closely with the principal and the admin team to identify students, to help figure out programs and placements. The PPW, you know, monitors attendance, but they also, you know, they do it to try to put interventions in place. The PPW is helpful in, you know, all residency issues, if people are having trouble making displaced. For example, we have a family that was displaced by a house fire, and she worked with our community members and other schools to gather a bunch of resources together.
And the whole purpose of the General Court is rehabilitation, not punishment. All the PDW worker does for me is she finds out their educational needs, whether or not they have ID. have ID cards, what they can do in school. And she actually has a one-on-one contact with the teachers dealing with my given house. What she does is she makes sure that those kids are aware that whatever the teacher tells her is going to be brought into the courtroom and I'm going to hold them accountable.
And what I see PPWs more than just with Elizabeth and General Court is what I refer to as the truancy roundtable, the inter-agency program where we all meet on a periodic basis when kids are not attending school.
As a part of transportation, we transport students that are McKenna-Vento qualified. McKenna-Vento is a federal law that was passed a number of years ago that requires students that are termed homeless, that they transport to their home school, a school of origin, and continue their education process without any disruption.
As we receive the transportation request form from the PPW, then we start looking for a route to incorporate the student into.
I have found nine times out of 10, I call my PPWs my miracle workers because they make things happen that I didn't even make seem to be possible. And I love the fact that I call them miracle workers, angels, whatever, because they do... they go above and beyond, and they have a tendency to make things happen.
I want to bring up our team of PPWs. Elizabeth Foot, Annie Gast, Anastasia Jones, Kim McGellicott, Melissa Sigmund, Jamie Walker, and Annette Wood.
Yeah, I forgot my stuff.
And Dr. Smith, if you can join us in our recognition as well. And I want to say thank you to Marion Williams and her team, of course, for putting together that amazing video.
Wonderful. Oh, my gosh, there's a really...I borrowed Ms. Allen's glasses. But I'm not even going to need to do that because you've given me a very large...
I need to stop bringing the penguins. I'm really sorry.
Well, it's the only way I'll learn to remember. Before I start this, I have to just say, this is really important. We recognize our teachers. We recognize all the people that work with our kids. We're going to be recognizing our nurses. But the pupil personnel worker, I think often people don't truly understand how incredibly interwoven your work is in everybody else's work. You really are the thing that stitches...you're the people who stitch everything together. We were having the Equity and Access first meeting last night, and people spoke several times about how incredibly essential your work is and how I need to find a way to fund more of you, which is a really interesting conversation after we just talked about the fact that... Whereas, Maryland is proud to recognize pupil personnel workers for serving all the children of all the people promoting the opportunities for every child to experience a safe and healthy environment. And whereas, pupil personnel workers are specialists trained to consider and assess the needs of the total child and serve as the school's liaison with the family, community organizations, and social agencies to foster children's physical, psychological, social, and intellectual growth. And whereas, pupil personnel workers work collaboratively with resources of the home, school, and community essential to the good mental, emotional, and physical health of each child necessary to advance effective teaching, learning, and achievement in schools. And whereas, it is important that the people of Maryland honor the unique and essential role that pupil personnel workers play in the personal and academic development of Maryland's children. These dedicated professionals do an outstanding job nurturing the growth, maturity, and responsibility that adulthood and good citizenship require. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes May 6th through the 10th, 2019, as Pupil Personnel Worker Week in the St. Mary's County Public Schools, and ask that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance and signed by all of the members. So, thank you very much for all that you do every single day. If you like the video. Wonderful. Does anybody have any words you'd like to share? If not, I ask that you stay while we recognize nurses, and then we'll take a picture with all of you. Okay. Thank you very much for your patience. Lovely. We'll save that for the picture. I still might need these for the other one, although it's blown up. It's a government proclamation, so it's in person.
It is my privilege to be here this morning on School Nurse Day with Ms. Trish Wince, Supervisor of Health Services, to share and expressing our appreciation for our school nurses. St. Mary's County Public Schools has joined with the American Nurses Association and the National Association of School Nurses in this important recognition. I would like to invite three nurses to join us as through their work, we recognize all nurses in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Ms. Tammy Metcalf from Chautauqua High School, Ms. Catherine Robison from Leonardtown Middle School, and Ms. Melinda Gloriot from Benjamin Banneker. Ms. Tammy Metcalf from Chautauqua High School joins us on behalf of our school nurses who have been trained in Stop the Bleed. Stop the Bleed training was provided by personnel from the Emergency Operations Center in our local law enforcement. This training empowers staff to make a difference in a life-threatening emergency by teaching them the basic techniques of bleeding control. Each school in our district will be provided with Stop the Bleed kits. Ms. Catherine Robison from Leonardtown Middle School joins us on behalf of our middle school nurses who have been implementing the Safe Sitter Program for our sixth through eighth graders. This program provides life skills, safety skills, and childcare training to youth in order to build safer communities. Ms. Melinda Gloriot from Benjamin Banneker joins us today to highlight the Safe at Home Program. Safe at Home is an introduction to safety skills and first aid necessary to prepare students for the responsibility of staying safe when unsupervised. This program teaches fourth and fifth grade students how to practice safe habits, how to prevent unsafe situations, and what to do when faced with dangers such as power failures or weather emergencies. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Smith to join us.
I really should.
But before you share the proclamation, I want to take a moment to recognize Trish Wince. Trish is retiring this year in just a couple short months. I want to recognize Trish for the work she has done in leading St. Mary's County Public Schools' health program for the past 18 years. She has accomplished so much in advancing the school health services program and nursing support to our students, staff, and families since 2001. Thank you for your commitment, Trish, to your work and to our schools and our students.
Ms. Wince, would you like to say a few words? I would love to have you say a few words.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I just briefly wanted to make sure, because I don't know when I'll get to speak to each of you. So, I just wanted to say, it's been a privilege to work at St. Mary's County Public Schools for the last 30 years. And I've seen the health services program evolve into a comprehensive model program. And it's because of Dr. Smith, as well as the Board of Ed's unwavering support and the excellent school nurses who provide care to our students and families each day. I am proud to have been a part of this model program, and I can tell you, many supervisors across the state are envious of what we have in St. Mary's County Public Schools. This model provides a comprehensive approach to ensure students are in school, ready to learn, and will graduate. So, thank you for the opportunity to work under such supportive leadership. Thank you.
There's a blown up one.
Yeah. Mrs. Allen had a pair that isn't quite as pink, so it's very fancy. Whereas, school nurses promote a healthy and safe school environment for all students and staff. They collaborate with parents, other health professionals, and other school staff to provide services for students that promote optimum health for academic success. And whereas, school nurses provide case management services and actively collaborate with others to build student and family capacity for adaptation, self-management, self-advocacy, and learning. And whereas, school nurses provide the necessary professional expertise to identify, assess, plan, implement, and evaluate the health needs of the school community. And whereas, school nurses identify health problems, develop plans, provide treatment for students with severe health needs, including anaphylactic allergies...I got anaphylactic, right? Anaphylactic allergies, diabetes, and asthma, in order that all children can access learning and be safe at school. With the support of school nurses, students with chronic illnesses are able to attend school with fewer interruptions in learning. And whereas, school nurses play an integral role in assisting families to access healthcare for their children. School health services programs emphasize prevention of disease and promotion of health and health services, health counseling, and health education. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement of students. Now, therefore, I, not me, Lawrence Hogan, Jr., Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2018, as School Nurse Day in Maryland, and do commend school nurses for the hard work and dedication they provide to students each and every day to ensure that they are healthy, safe, and ready to learn. And this is it blown up. This is it smaller. I will say this of Trish. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you when I was in a school and now that I've been at central office for the past way long years. You're a lovely...you're just a lovely person to work with. You're so well-informed to the craft, but you're also so attuned to the needs of students and the people who work with students, whether it's Ebola, or bird flu, or all of the things that we've consulted on to try to mitigate. You've just been a wonder. And I'm not a hugger, but... Perhaps you could take a break and take some photos.
Thank you.
Let's do the nurses first and get a photo with all the nurses.
We are back in session. May I have a motion? Do we have any public comment first?
No, we do not.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right. Ms. Long, you're in the whole thing today.
Yeah, I know. I promise after this, I'll be out of your space.
You've got a third of the meeting on your plate here.
I'm here to talk to you about the professional services contract for mental health counseling to request approval for a professional services contract with Center for Children for mental health counseling services at multiple St. Mary's County Public School locations. And as you remember, in November of 2018, we brought before the board the Safe to Learn Grant, and part of that grant was to fund mental health counseling. The next steps in doing that was to do a request for a proposal, which was done...which was posted on eMaryland Marketplace on January of 2019. We received six responses under that request. One of the responses was not complete, so that was rejected. An evaluation committee of four members from Student Services got together to review...to evaluate the responses, and five providers were determined to be responsive and qualified to provide services. Center for Children, of course, being one of them. At this time, we...so, five of those providers are able to provide services for us. At this time, we have only heard from Center for Children as far as having available staff to provide those services. So, we are working with them at this time. It seems that the contract may exceed $50,000, so I'm bringing it back before the board. Certainly, if any of the other agencies were to provide us with staffing, we would engage with them as well. They contact us, but I also reach out to them at times, too, to see if they have found any staffing for us. So, the recommended action at this time is that the board approve this agenda item as presented.
I have no questions. Thank you. I just want to thank you for working so hard in order to secure these...the mental health providers for our students. I just think it's really important. I know that it is through a grant, but I know that, like, I keep pushing that we need to have school psychologists and counselors, and I just think this is one avenue to be able to provide those services. So, thanks for going out and finding these people and for the grants.
Just echo what Mrs. Wince said. Thank you. No questions.
My only question is, are all of the...are all of the people who responded, are they all local, or are they like a regional service that has local people here?
Both.
Okay. All right. Because I just...I noticed one of them was Cumberland, and I'm like, that clearly is not local.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And our mental health is just as important or more than our physical health. So, it's important that our students and families and staff members have access to great mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying why Center for Children was selected, since they did...were not at the very top for the weighted score. The fact that they're the only ones that responded, saying that they have the staff available, makes sense. Thank you very much. That was my only question.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a professional services contract to the Center for Children for mental health counseling services at multiple school locations at an estimated cost of $60,000.
So, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion, Carrie. Thank you.
You don't want to do any more?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wince.
Chautauqua High School, underground fuel storage tank replacement. Today, we're here to ask for your approval to award a contract to Tidewater Incorporated
The contract, we, we put an ITP together with a design, and we also searched out contracts used by other counties that may facilitate this, and put a contract out, and the focus of the contract was, of course, the replacement of the 15,000 gallon underground storage tank with the supply lines and an automatic leak detection device at Chopticon High School. It would come with, the way we structured the contract, it would come with a 30-year warranty against internal and external corrosion and/or structural failure of the underground storage tank, 10-year warranty against leaks or failures of the underground fuel piping, and a two-year warranty on the leak monitoring system. The procurement method we used was an ITB, ITB SMCPS 2019 M USTR, was issued on March 25th, 2019, and posted on email and marketplace and the SMCPS Purchasing Office Bid Board in accordance with the adopted Code of Maryland, Maryland Education Articles and Board Policy and Regulations. The SMCPS Purchasing Office requested sealed bids for experienced and qualified contractors to perform the replacement of the underground storage tank at Chopticon High School on April 26th, 2019. Three sealed bids were received, and opened. Tidewater Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder and fully met the requirements of the solicitation. And we're here today to recommend that the Board, the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
I only have one question, and you might have actually already answered it, but do you know what time of year you might start working on this, if you get an approval?
If, we got approval today, there's a 30 to 40-day lead time in the manufacturing of the tank. So, it would be right at the beginning of the summer.
Okay.
It would be done probably shortly after the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Have you had any dealings in the past with Tidewater?
Not directly. They, they, we have had contractors win bids and use them as our subcontractor to actually do the work.
Okay.
So, we have not contracted directly with Tidewater with this type of work, but we have worked with them as subcontractors. I don't know if
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Need any further explanation, but it's
No, it makes sense. I didn't know if you had any dealings with them at all, so that was kind of
Yeah.
And the other thing that I find very interesting is the range of prices such as for the removal and disposal of contaminated soil. I just saw it from, you know, 85 all the way up to 350. So, I mean, that's, you know, quite a wide range. And I guess how they, you know, price each one of their things, it's like, one has 45 and one has 300. So, but I just found that interesting, but thank you.
Kind of the same question, in terms of remediation, sometimes you just don't know. Do you have a contingency, is there a contingency in there in the pricing?
There is a contingency.
$26,878.60.
Thank you very much.
Do you think that's sufficient?
Yes, I hope. I do not, we do not know what we're going to locate once we get underneath the tank, but the last time the tank was tested was five years ago, and we did not perceive a need to test it between that five-year period for loss of fuel, undocumented loss of fuel. If fuel goes down, you don't, you weren't running the boilers, or, we didn't have that. So, I'm hoping, and because the wet test, the wet test passed and the pressurized test failed, it tends to tell me that it needs more hydraulic or more pressure to get the fuel out of the tank. So, I'm hoping that's the case, and we have minimal, but there is 20, I apologize, $26,000 with a contingency there in case, and
Well, my, my experience, I'll tell you a quick story. We bought a company I work for, we bought a property, it was abandoned, a gas station. Bought the property for half a, half a million dollars, and we spent almost a million dollars in remediation, so
That is not a good story to him.
It's not a good story.
That's not a good story, so
So, I guess where I'm coming is that the contingency was, I thought was kind of low.
Bad example.
That's all I have, thank you.
Where, where physically is this tank on the, on the campus?
Are you familiar with the RNTC trailer?
Yeah.
It's, it's, if you look at the sidewalk that crosses there, it's actually underneath the sidewalk. It's, it's built into the architecture of the sidewalk behind the building.
Oh, okay.
You'll see in three-man hole covers.
Kind of a tight area, too.
It, it is. There's a temporary tank back in there also.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, I have
So, the defective tank, did it have an automatic leak detection device?
No, it did not.
So, this is better, because the tank we want will have that feature on it.
It will, it'll let us know sooner, plus we still have to do the, the due diligence testing every five years when we see something.
Okay.
It has, it detects water levels underneath the tank, and it looks for oil in the water levels underneath the tank. It also looks for vapor that would escape. If you were to leak out of the tank, you would have vapor up a pipe. It detects vapor there. They've come a long way.
Great.
It also monitors, the new tanks have two walls, instead of having like just a can, it's like a can inside a can, and it monitors the space between those two for any kind of fluid, so
Well, the tanks, they have come a long way.
They have come
Technology.
Yeah, they have.
Thank you.
What was the age of the test, age of the tank that we're replacing?
20, the documents say 26 years.
How long are they expected, what's the expected lifespan?
That is short of the expected lifespan by about four years. There is a question on whether the documents are correct, and we will not know until we remove the old tank. This tank was put in in 93 during a renovation that went through difficulties with documentation towards the end of it.
Got it. Thank you. I mean, you know, it would have been nice if it had lasted the full 30 years, but I'm pleased at least that we're going to have an upgraded system put in place to replace it. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the award of contract SMCPS 2019 M USTR to Tidewater Incorporated in the amount of $191,991 for the replacement of the underground fuel oil storage tank at Chopticon High School. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of $26,878.60.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. We can just move right on to Letty Dent.
And, there you go. Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School and Mechanicsville Elementary School ACM flooring The introduction is, we're here today to request the approval to a contract for the ACM flooring abatement to Bristol Environmental Incorporated in the amount of $43,304 for Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School, and to Sandu Construction Incorporated doing business as Abatement Incorporated in the amount of $24,076 for Mechanicsville Elementary School, for a total award of $67,380. The background for this project is, flooring abatement is required in several areas of Letty Marshall Dent and Mechanicsville, Mechanicsville Elementary School to address maintenance and operational needs. The affected flooring was installed at Letty Marshall Dent and Mechanicsville Elementary School in 1980 and 1997 respectively. To, to, the focus of the contract naturally is to abate the flooring, which is all VCT and Mastic, Vital Composition Tile, and the glue or Mastic that holds it to the floor. So, at, this is a floor plan of Letty Marshall Dent, the areas in red are the areas that'll be abated with the classroom numbers. And then, moving on to Mechanicsville, Mechanicsville, because of renovation scheduled soon, we're doing, this is more of a repair to get us to that point, so we're doing the gym, which is in poor condition, the art room, oh, you can't see what I'm doing, I apologize. So, we're doing the gymnasium, the art room, a portion of the hallway, a work area in the back, and then you see where we're doing several repairs at entrances and stairwell. Procurement method was an invite, the invitation to bid was issued on April 3rd, 2019, and posted on email and marketplace and the SMCPS Purchasing Office Bid Board in accordance with the annotated Code of Maryland Education Article and with Board Policy and Regulations, DGC and DGCR. The St. Mary's County Purchasing Office requested sealed bids for experienced and qualified contractors to perform the abatement of the flooring material containing asbestos at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School and Mechanicsville Elementary School. On April 25th, 2019, seven bids, seven sealed bids were received and opened. SMCPS reserves the right to make multiple awards. Bristol Environmental Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder for Item 1, which was Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School, and Sandu Construction Incorporated doing business as Abatement Incorporated in the amount of $24,076 for Mechanicsville Elementary School, for a total award of $67,380. The background for this project is, flooring abatement is required in several areas of Letty Marshall Dent and Mechanicsville, Mechanicsville Elementary School to address maintenance and operational needs. The affected flooring was installed at Letty Marshall Dent and Mechanicsville Elementary School in 1980 and 1997 respectively. To, to, the focus of the contract naturally is to abate the flooring, which is all VCT and Mastic, Vital Composition Tile, and the glue or Mastic that holds it to the floor. So, at, this is a floor plan of Letty Marshall Dent, the areas in red are the areas that'll be abated with the classroom numbers. And then, moving on to Mechanicsville, Mechanicsville, because of renovation scheduled soon, we're doing, this is more of a repair to get us to that point, so we're doing the gym, which is in poor condition, the art room, oh, you can't see what I'm doing, I apologize. So, we're doing the gymnasium, the art room, a portion of the hallway, a work area in the back, and then you see where we're doing several repairs at entrances and stairwell. Procurement method was an invite, the invitation to bid was issued on April 3rd, 2019, and posted on email and marketplace and the SMCPS Purchasing Office Bid Board in accordance with the annotated Code of Maryland Education Article and with Board Policy and Regulations, DGC and DGCR. The St. Mary's County Purchasing Office requested sealed bids for experienced and qualified contractors to perform the abatement of the flooring material containing asbestos at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School and Mechanicsville Elementary School. On April 25th, 2019, seven bids, seven sealed bids were received and opened. SMCPS reserves the right to make multiple awards. Bristol Environmental Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder for Item 1, which was Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School, and Sandu Construction Incorporated doing business as Abatement Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder for Item 2, which was Mechanicsville Elementary School. And we recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Okay, I have one question. Have we worked with any of these bidders before in the past?
Bristol, as a, again, as a subcontractor, but not Sandu. But Sandu has done, looking at their references and their previous work experience, they have done comparable, they have done this type of work on jobs with larger amounts of square foot, and they have also worked in public school systems before.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So, and I see there's areas that need to be patched in Mechanicsville, and then Letty Marshall Dent has just areas to be completed. Is the rest of the school completed as far as Letty Marshall Dent?
Do you mind if I go back to the photograph?
Please don't.
I may need some help. I brought help. Generally speaking, where's the laser port? Generally speaking, it's not coming up. So, generally speaking, this is the older section of the school, and most of these areas did have flooring that contained ACM. Generally speaking, this back half of the school is a newer section and did not. If memory serves, the hallways are still ACM, and there's spotty classrooms. The rest of those classrooms, if I recall correctly, are, were not finished with VCT when they were originally built, they were finished with carpet.
Right.
So, actually, going, going back to that hallway where that, on the, where the first red block is on the hallway on the right-hand side?
Right.
Go up, 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 up. So, all of the classrooms along there, they have, over the years, they have replaced the flooring
Yes.
And pulled up. So, right now, in those classrooms they have right now, it's flooring and then carpet over top.
Okay, so that has already been completed.
Right, going back that hallway, that has already been completed
Okay.
On the left-hand side, like, whatever, I don't have mine up right now, but whatever, that room right there is Sherry Jellic's room, so if you go back on those four classrooms, they've already been completed over the past, since we've been here over the past couple of years.
Okay.
Because they, you know, they've replaced that flooring and pulled it up, but these are like the last, this is the last piece that needs to be completed.
Yeah. Over to, over, as the end of the fiscal year approaches every year, if there's funds available, we usually direct it at flooring in multiple schools. Right now, if you, if, I wish I brought a picture, but if I brought up a picture of how spotty it is, you can see where we, over the years, we've done smaller jobs as we've had funding.
Okay.
This, this should, for the most part, finish the school, with the exception of those main hallways.
Okay, and what about Mechanicsville?
Mechanicsville is due for a renov, I believe they're in the CIP for '21 is the beginning of the funding.
Yeah, if it, if it doesn't get pushed out again, yeah.
Mechanicsville Elementary School, the exit doors, the gym flooring, the art room, there's little, some spots in the media, and, and the two spots in the main hallways were identified during the
Surveillance.
During the Harris Surveillance, which Mr. Varner can speak a little more to, but it's a monitoring program.
We're inspected by a certified industrial hygienist every three years, certified personnel in my department being included, do a surveillance of known areas of asbestos in every school building every six months. So, these repairs that he's speaking of were identified during one of those routine surveillances.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No questions?
My only question is, okay, so this is just going to pull up the flooring, then we have to put something else down, so how is all that, what's the timeline, because clearly
These contracts are required to be completed by July 20. We've coordinated with both, with the flooring contractor to make sure we wrote enough time into the contract, the abatement contractor, I believe.
Yes, do we have the flooring contract come here yet, or is it under the
It's already, you talking about through the Board of Education?
Yeah.
It's already been, it's a previous contract that was, already been awarded.
Okay.
And the, the cost wasn't over $50,000.
Right, that, that's what I, I didn't think it was, that's why, because I don't remember, so, okay. All right, that's all I have.
No questions, thank you.
So, you're confident that all the work, the abatement and putting down new flooring can happen prior to the beginning of the school year?
I am. There would, there would likely be touch-up or punchless items for the flooring, the base code that has to go up with the flooring, the thresholds that come with the flooring, but I'm confident that the teachers' rooms will be put back together, and they'll be in there, and the floor underneath of them will be done. But I'm sure that there'll be some, some level of punchless that has to be done.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, does anyone have, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve award contract SMCPS 2019 M ACM for the abatement of flooring materials containing asbestos to Bristol Environmental Incorporated in the amount of $43,304 for Letty Marshall Dent's Elementary School and to Sound, Sandow Construction Incorporated, DBA Abatement Incorporated in the amount of $24,076 for Mechanicsville Elementary School, for a total award of 63, 67,380. The Board further authorizes a construction contingency of 9,434.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right, Ms. Tammy Burr. 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant Summer Program.
Okay, I am here today to present to you some information about some money we have coming into the school system for summer programs. In the past several years, we've had a variety of summer programs in the county. Two of the largest were the 21st Century Community Learning Center at Great Mills High School and the Title I Summer School Program. Neither of those programs were funded this year through 21st Century or through Title I, so we drafted new grant proposals, and we were awarded grants to run similar programs The programs will be similar to what was run in the past. The summer learning program for elementary Title One students will now fall under Twenty-first Century instead of under Title One funding, and that is for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And the program at Great Mills High School has been expanded, it will be both a bridge and credit recovery program, and that was funded through the Twenty-first Century Program of MSD for a little over a hundred thousand dollars. The focus of both of these programs will be to prevent what is typically called summer slide and to prepare students for the upcoming school year. That seems very important when we look at our past performance, even though research shows that at-risk students and economically disadvantaged students in elementary school typically experience two to three months of achievement loss over the summer. Last year's students who participated in the Title One Summer School Program, eighty percent of them either maintained or improved their reading skills. Additionally, while many high school freshmen struggle academically the first quarter of the school year of high school or their first full year, thirty-five percent of the students who participated in the high school program at Great Mills last year earned nothing less than a C on their first marking period report card. The elementary school program will be held at Greenview Knowles this summer. It will run July eighth through August eighth, Monday through Thursday, eight to three. Additionally, there will be a literacy camp or enrichment week at St. Mary's College of Maryland where the elementary students, the rising fifth graders, will work with the MAT students at St. Mary's College, and we also have a number of community partners, you see several of them listed there. These community partners will come in and do special presentations to the students in the afternoon. Like I said, the list up there about the St. Mary's College, St. Mary's Library, the N double ACP, four H, the University of Maryland Extension is not by any means an extensive list to the number of people who have signed on to assist with this program. The secondary program will be for both bridge and credit recovery. It runs the same dates, July eighth through August eighth, Monday through Thursday, however, this is a half-day program from seven forty-five to twelve thirty. Both programs, the elementary and the secondary program, include breakfast and lunch for the students involved. The enrichment week for the secondary program will be for those rising freshmen, and it will focus on integrated arts lessons that will tie in with the math and reading lessons being conducted the first five weeks of the program at Great Mills High School. Community partners for this program include St. Mary's College, the Cove D F Z, the Rotary Club, and a lot of other people, including our own James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, who will come in and do special presentations to support the enrichment time. Some sample schedules, the elementary students will start out with breakfast, they will move into two consecutive academic blocks, one focused on reading and literacy, the other focused on math. They will then have lunch and recess, and their afternoon time will be enrichment with the community partners that we listed earlier. The secondary program starts at seven forty-five with breakfast, and they have two academic blocks. The rising freshmen will do a seventy-minute academic block of math and a seventy-minute academic block of reading. The credit recovery students will work on two blocks of credit recovery using the new Edgenuity Program, and then there will be an enrichment block for all of the students where the community partners will come in and provide enrichment activities, college career readiness activities, and we're also exploring some local field trips to like explore the resources of our local library or look at our local Naval Air Museum, things like that can tie in academically and socially. Then they will have lunch and they will be dismissed at twelve thirty. Enrichment activities, the photographs are some enrichment activities we've done in the past, the one in the center is our literacy camp last year at St. Mary's College. We also have four H who comes in and they bring their blender bike, the kids love the blender bike, that's one of their favorite activities. We'll also look at health and wellness through the University of Maryland Extension, they're going to come in and talk about health and wellness individually, socially, and environmentally, and we will have team building and creative arts activities during the enrichment block. So to summarize, we'll have Twenty-first Century Programs offered to help identify Title One students and bridging middle school students and current high school students to help prevent the summer slide and prepare them for the nineteen-twenty school year, and all of our programs are strongly supported by community organizations, businesses, and individuals. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I think it's a wonderful program, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank you, after one grant was no longer available, that you went out and sought another one, so good for you, so that the students have something to look forward to over the summer. How, how are students chosen to be able to participate in the program?
We are currently working with PPWs, guidance counselors, and content area teachers at the schools to identify the students who would most benefit from these programs.
All right, okay, thank you.
I had no questions, but I was interested in your comment about the reading levels either maintain or they improve with the summer program, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, that data is from last year's program, and we're following a very similar model this year, so our hopes are that we will get very similar results.
I have any questions? Thank you very much, I echo Mrs. Weaver's statements. So, once again, always on the lookout for grants and money.
And thanks, thank you for obtaining a grant to fund this program. How many students can you accommodate in the elementary and secondary program?
The elementary program, we're looking to have a hundred to a hundred and twenty students. We have five Title One elementary schools, plus we're inviting Title One eligible students from the parochial schools and the non-public schools, so if we would get twenty from every school, which is our limit, that would be a hundred and twenty students that we're looking at. The secondary program, we are looking at fifteen rising freshmen from Esperanza and fifteen rising freshmen from Spring Ridge, and then thirty current Great Mills High School students who would benefit from credit recovery opportunities.
Is transportation provided?
Transportation will be provided.
Wonderful, thank you.
You've answered all my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anyone have anything else?
I just, again, to echo Ms. Weaver, and thank you very much, Ms. Burr. A door closes, we find a window, we will get there.
Or a fire escape.
Or a fire escape, or worse comes to worse, we'll make a hole. It's just, it's quite a testament to really going back in and working with our funding agents to get what we need for our kids. This is a, this is a really important program for that hundred and eighty children, every single son, so, thank you.
I just have one quick thing before we adjourn, I know Scott, you're all caught up in your report, just a heartfelt thank you from the Board to every single person who showed up at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School yesterday, whether you were a first responder, whether you were just driving by, or whether-
Community member, neighbor.
Community members, whatever, who came out to help. I think it, once again, it just showed the outpouring of support in the community when someone is in need of something, so you can expand further, because-
Yeah, well, I just, we're gonna, they did a, they're doing a debrief, they did a debrief this morning at the school, and we want to, we want to certainly reach out and give thanks to the people that did show up and work. It was people from the tri-county area, there were search dogs from Waldorf, there was the command center that came down from Charles County, it was really, it was really something. It was, it was a very, and it finished very positive, it was a very positive experience, so I love this county.
Okay. All right, so the work session that Dr. Smith alluded to at the beginning will be next Thursday, which is the sixteenth, at nine o'clock in the morning. We are going to send out invitations to the county commissioners to attempt to have a dialogue on that. Then our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, May twenty-second, at six o'clock, and then we are adjourned. We will stick around for the work session.